Roger Proust.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Kathy McMillan.
Here.
Jerry Gaddam.
Here.
Mary Miles.
Here.
Lynn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, who is with us today, who is with us in this life, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death, who is with us in this birth, who is with us in this death,
one hundred and forty dollars and this small increase in premium is primarily due to an increase in property values. That's the main wa- way they rate that on property values. Uh, our agent has recommended that we stay with Zurich and the staff also, uh, recommends that we stay with, uh, Zurich and with Sullivan in- Insurance Agency.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy McMillan?
Yes.
Karen Cather?
Yes.
Jenny Mollum?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number thirteen is approve an agreement with C L Freitas for third-party administrative services for the city's health benefits program for three years with automatic successive agreement, uh, periods for twelve months thereafter.
Uh, Mayor and trustees, uh, C L Freitas is currently performing our third-party administrative services for a health benefit program. Uh, they've performed this service for over eight years now. We believe they've done a good job processing claims, shopping for excess insurance, uh, collecting reimbursements from excess insurance companies and managing large cases. They also participate in our health benefit, uh, committee meetings. As many of you know, it's, it's been on our committee. Uh, and they also help keep our plan documented. We feel like they're really doing a good job. Uh, they have offered a three-year agreement for our third-party administrative services. There is no increase in rates for our first year of agreement. Uh, there's a four point four seven increase for the eligibility and claim services, a seventy cent increase for utilization management services and a thirty cent increase in Cobra HIPAA administrative services for the following twenty-four months. Uh, the staff recommends that we approve the agreement with C L Freitas, uh, with the three-year agreement with automatic successive agreements, periods of twelve months each. And Connie Wolf with C L Freitas is here if you would have any questions about this.
I have a question for Randy. Randy, can we do this? Can, can you do the twelve consecutive months afterwards?
With, with the W A.
Okay. Okay.
And we can also end the agreement. We don't have to go with all those, but at the end of each, uh, term, we can, uh, end it with a sixty-day notice.
Manu, the answer, I just have to ask him here.
Right.
So, I appreciate it. Thanks. Um, do we have a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, change it. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy McMillan?
Yes.
Karen Cather?
Yes.
Jenny Mollum?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Uh, item number fourteen is consider approval of the property and contents insurance policy including flood, earthquake coverage with Hartford and physical damage coverage, uh, on our sanitation trucks with Great American Insurance and Universal Insurance Company as agent for one year at approximate cost of a hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars.
Mayor and trustees, our current insurance agent for property is Tom Green with Universal Insurance Agency. Our current, uh, property insurance is with Hartford Insurance Company. The physical damage coverage for our sanitation trucks is with Great American Insurance Company. Uh, our current rate for property and contents is about eighteen cents per a hundred dollars of value. The renewal quote is about twenty cents per a hundred dollars of value. Hartford, Hartford is op- has offered an option at ten million dollars of earthquake and flood coverage for an additional, additional twenty-one hundred and forty-one dollars. Uh, Great American has offered to continue to provide physical damage coverage for our sanitation trucks for seven thousand and four dollars. Uh, the current premium is five thousand and one of the reasons that that's going up, uh, significantly is, as you all know, we have added a new sanitation truck in two thousand eleven. Uh, the staff recommends that the MPWA trustees approve the Hartford for our property and context, contents coverage including the earthquake and, uh, flood coverage and Great American Insurance Company's policy for physical damage for our sanitation trucks and Universal Insurance Company as our agent. And, uh, Tom Green with Universal Insurance is here if you have any questions. And then I have one note, uh, just as an example. Uh, the May two thousand and ten, uh, claim that we had for a hail damage, uh, was about four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So, uh, just kind of put the context of the, uh, premium in, in proper perspective there.
I think you have the hardest job in the city. I really do. Seriously. Keeping up with all that stuff is just amazing. I appreciate the job you do too.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. If next month we decide that we need to buy another truck on, uh, for an emergency, real quick?
Right.
Does that automatically?
We just have to add it to our coverage.
Okay. And does our coverage?
We would have the coverage through, we have the coverage through, uh, Great American and we would just, I would just, once we got the truck, I would notify Universal and they would notify Great American. It would be added.
And then would the cost of our insurance go up at that time or d- or does it stay at the same amount?
It would go up basically on a whatever the dollar amount is.
Percent. Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
According to whatever the truck is and then depending on how much was left in the year also.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
I, I do. I would say I think it's wise at this point to go ahead and add the earthquake. That's a pre- pretty reasonable cost to add it.
Stan and I had a claim on one this morning, didn't we, Stan? I wonder. Yeah. Okay. Uh, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy McMillan?
Yes.
Karen Cather?
Yes.
Jenny Mollum?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair? Lynn Lewis?
Uh, yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number fifteen A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held December fifth, two thousand eleven. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve in the amount of one hundred six thousand, four hundred dollars, ninety-seven cents.
Move to approve.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? Any changes or notes to the minutes? If not, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote?
Karen Cather?
Yes.
Jenny Mollum?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy McMillan?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Got you.
The Moore Economic Development Authority meeting is called to order. Please call the roll.
Robert Kraus?
Present.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Kathy McMillan?
Here.
Lynn Lewis?
Here.
Karen Cather?
Here.
Jenny Mollum?
Here.
Robert, David Roberts.
Item number seventeen is the consent docket. A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held November twenty-first, two thousand eleven.
Move to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy McMillan?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Karen Cather?
Yes.
Jenny Mollum?
Yes. Item passes. We'll now recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
Thank you. Let the record reflect all the members that were present or still present. Item number eighteen is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up, wouldn't even like to speak. Okay. Item B is items from the city council or trustees. I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Appreciate everything that's happened all year long. It's been a good year. Okay. Item C is items from the city trust manager or city manager.
I have a couple of items, Mayor. ODOT's been looking at the speed limit on I thirty-five for several months from our twenty-seventh street south to the river bi- bridge on the south side of Norman. It's inconsistent all through that stretch. It varies anywhere from sixty to sixty-five, seventy miles per hour. They would like to make it uniform and I visited with Jerry Stillings this afternoon and I think what we'd like to see staff-wise is sixty-five miles per hour from the north end of s- of the city through the south end. And from what ODOT has told me, that's where Norman's headed with it, is sixty-five miles per hour. But it does fluctuate from one end to the other and if no one has any objections, then that's the direction that we'll give ODOT. And also, we're wrapping up our master plan on our park system and we're probably ninety-five percent complete. And at this point, we feel we need to call a joint meeting with the Parks Board and the city council. And we have a couple of dates that I'd like to offer and see if that would work on y'all's schedule. There's two dates. Both of them are Mondays. One of them is January the ninth. That's an off week for city council and the other one is January the sixteenth, which is would have to, we'd have to convene like five o'clock in the afternoon and then adjourn at six-thirty. And if we do it on the ninth, we'd recommend five-thirty to seven. It's, what would y'all rather, how would y'all rather handle that? Or is, do th- do those dates fo- work for your schedule?
Either one's okay with me.
Would you rather do it on an off week or right before the council meeting?
Think they give us enough time? We did it before the council meeting?
Yes, we think we can do it. There's just, there's some information we need to share with both entities and it really needs, city council needs to be there with the way this is happening because we need direction.
Could you be there by, could you be there by five?
Sure.
Sixteenth is great for me.
Sixteenth is the one you got.
Sixteenth is Martin Luther King holiday.
Somewhere would be.
So we, won't the city offices be closed?
They will be closed, so it'll be the seventeenth.
So the seventeenth?
It works for me.
Actually, I won't be.
That work?
I have a wrestling event that day, but you guys can still meet if you want. I'll get the clip notes later.
We could bump it back to a Thursday night. Would that?
Well, Tuesdays and Thurs- uh, let's see. Um.
Monday's fine.
Yeah. Monday's a night.
Mondays are, Mondays are fine. We, we wrestle Tuesdays and Thursdays.
It's fine with me. It's fine.
Monday, the night?
Yeah, that, that works fine.
Five-thirty, would that work?
On the night?
Yes.
It's okay with me.
Okay.
All right.